Good evening, this is the regular meeting of the South Haven City Council for Monday, January the 20th, 2020. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And before we get going this evening, Mr. DeSette would like to give us an update on our livestream.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, members in the audience, we are having some technical difficulties with the city's website, our ability to livestream tonight's meeting. It's currently unable to be streamed as a live feed. We will be recording tonight's meeting. The recording will be placed on the city's website tomorrow. The meeting is also being livestreamed on the Comcast feed for anyone who is a Comcast subscriber, they can watch this. We are putting up a note right now on the city's website announcing a technical difficulty. And again, as soon as we complete, we will move the recording of tonight's meeting onto the city's website. So anyone who is desirous of seeing the meeting, they can find it through south-haven.com.
Thanks for the update. The invocation this evening is going to be given by Mr. Melvin Higgins of the Life Bridge Church. And good evening, and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Kind of an honor and a privilege to stand before such great people. It's an honor to all of the council, Mayor Smell, and to all of God's people. Quote something that's, I know it's a separation of church and state, but yet we know who holds the future, so therefore we'll quote a old sacred magistrate which we all familiar with. Our Father, which art in heaven, holy is thy name. Father, your kingdom come. We ask that your will be done in us as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Forgive us of our sins as well as our trespasses, as we forgive those who sin and trespass against us. Father, lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from all evil. Why? For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory. We first of all want to give him honor and glory for who he is because he the one that holds our next breath, that keeps our family, keeps our nation safe. It's the same one who raised up men like Dr. Martin Luther King on this great day that we set aside to represent and honor the men and the women that served. And I want to add a special blessing over the service, people that serve in the military and all the functions of this fine city. And I just want to say God bless you and God keep you.
Thank you very much. And now if you'll join me, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we get to do something fun. We're going to do a proclamation this evening in recognition of Ms. Norma Lyons, who celebrated her 100th birthday, which is amazing at any account. So I'm going to read this, and I just talked to Doug, and we're going to sneak over Friday, 10 o'clock, wink, wink. We're going to go over and do this in person, so we will head over there. So I will read this, and this is a history lesson, so listen to some of the names and the places here as we go. This is a proclamation. Whereas on Saturday, June the 3rd, 1920, Norma Lorraine Cobb was born to Pearl and Joy Cobb at the family home at 653 Le Grange Street, joining an older brother Vincent, followed later by a little brother Pearl Junior and little sister Carol. Whereas Norma Cobb attended the local public schools, graduating from Central High School in 1938, followed by night classes and bookkeeping and a job at South Haven Chemical Company. And whereas Norma Cobb married her high school sweetheart, Albert Lyons, on September the 19th, 1941, in Bryan, Ohio, prior to Albert deploying during World War II. And whereas Norma Lyons lived with her parents while working and helping care for her little sister, not knowing for several years where in the world her husband was because letters were delayed and censored. And whereas Albert returned, he and Norma purchased their first home at 727 Green Street, and Norma quit going to work to become the stay-at-home mother of two boys, Albert Douglas Junior, who goes by Doug, and Craig Richard. And whereas Norma Lyons briefly worked at Van Buren Savings and Loan and Hale's Department Store, she then was recruited to work at the Michigan Gas Utilities, where she was the office manager and cashier chatting with most of South Haven's residents as they came in to pay their bills. And whereas Norma and Albert Lyons purchased a brand-new house on Hazel Street in 1962, which they enjoyed until Albert's passing, in March of 1938, when Norma decided to retire after 20 years to enjoy traveling with her siblings and spending happy times with her dearest and longest friend, Marie DeSette. Whereas Norma grew up attending the First Baptist Church, served as the church's financial secretary for many years and is still a member, Norma also enjoyed archery, winning the Michigan State Archery Championship Instinctive Division in 1963, using a bow and arrow made by her husband and father-in-law, fishing off the pier, gardening, needlework, writing poetry, and reading. Now, therefore, let it be resolved that the city of South Haven wishes to recognize Norma Lyons on her 100th birthday and conveys warm wishes for her continued health and well-being. And again, just thanks to the family for sharing this and getting this to us, because we love to recognize, and that's a great lesson in history. So we will be there Friday, 10 o'clock, and we will present this in person. So thank you again for being here tonight. It was great. Anything else, Ann, or other than your? You can come on up, please share.
She's got here to make her granddaughter Tara, which was Craig's daughter, and her great-grandson Xander. So she's still got a line in the city of South Haven, so.
Very good. This was great reading this. I said it very exciting, and I've learned a lot.
Yeah. Well, she's always loved South Haven, and we appreciate the recognition.
Well, very good. I look forward to seeing her on Friday, so.
Okay.
And thanks, everybody, for coming.
Yep.
And as I promised, you are more than welcome to sneak out. We appreciate your being here, though. Thank you. Thanks for sharing. Roll call.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Chris Campbell.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schlock.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Patricia Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here. That takes us to the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion, second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's approved consent agenda items A through D.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through D.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call, though.
Arnold.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Schlock.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. Which takes us to new business. The city council will be asked to receive a presentation, and it's going to be from actually Peter Hafner of Bradwell, Hafner LLC, the city's independent auditing firm. So on that, we'll hear it, and then we'll, after that, we'll be asked to consider a motion. So we'll listen first. So good evening, thanks for coming.
Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have regarding your audit, and I thought I would touch upon some of the financial highlights. And I've done that in the form of some slides. But first of all, I'd like to just talk about the opinion on the financial statements, which is on page one of the financial statements, and it's the very last paragraph, and I'll summarize it for you. Excuse me, as the opinion is actually two pages long. I'm just going to, I like to point out always that the financial statements are the responsibility of management, and it's our responsibility to express an opinion on those financial statements based on our audit. Your audit was conducted in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards and government auditing standards, and we have an opinion on the financial statements, and in accordance with government auditing standards, we also have an opinion on your system of internal controls over financial reporting. With that being said, on page one, the last paragraph, I'm going to summarize it. It's our opinion that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial position, results of operations and cash flows where applicable with the governmental activities, the business-type activities, the aggregate component units, each major fund as well as the aggregate funds in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and that's what I would refer to as a clean opinion. The financial statements are presented as required under generally accepted accounting principles. Those principles are required also to be followed by the state of Michigan. With that being said, the second opinion we provide is at the rear of the report. It's on page 127, and in paragraph four, I just wanted to point out that as part of the audit procedures performed and looking at your system of internal controls, we did not identify any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in your system of internal controls. Following our initial opinion is the management's discussion and analysis. That provides a nice summary of where did you end this year, what were the results of the operations for this year compared to last year, and a description of your financial highlights for the current year, what happened from a debt perspective, what happened from a capital asset perspective, as well as what are you looking at and what was considered when preparing your current-year budget. So great place to point the interest at public, the media. And following the management's discussion and analysis are those financial statements that we have audited and the notes to the financial statements. So what I wanted to point out is some of the slides we will take a look at are following the full accrual basis of accounting. That's the basis of accounting followed by a business typically. So we will see all of your assets on the books, including buildings, fire trucks, roads, and all the liabilities of the city on your books, following that full accrual basis of accounting. So we'll see liabilities for your pension, for your OPEP plan, post-retirement benefits, as well as any bonds outstanding, compensated absences payable. Following those full accrual financial statements that are very summarized are fund-to-financial statements, and so we'll look at your general fund and your other governmental funds following the modified accrual basis of accounting, more of a cash-in, cash-out perspective. So when we walk through the slides, I'll say, this is that full accrual perspective, this is that modified accrual perspective. But the goal of the slides is really to walk you through the front financial statements. So if you would turn with me, if you have a hard copy of this document, the audit, if you could turn with me to page 16. On page 16, we show your general fund, assets, liabilities, and fund balance, and the next column, right next to your general fund, are those non-major governmental funds. I just want to point out, those non-major governmental funds are presented in the back of the audit report, and there'll be a detail, fund after fund, major street, local street, street construction, various funds, and those can be found on page, I believe, on page And so in the front of the report, summarized, and only the largest funds, and in the back of the report, those non-major or smaller funds. So on page 60, I may have directed you to, yes, I've directed you to the general fund budget and actual statement, and following that statement, if you would turn with me to page 68, here is the detail of those non-major funds. So in the front, very summarized, and less, it's the largest of funds, like your water, sewer, electric utility, and the general fund, but these are those other funds that you budget, you look at throughout the year, that finance some of your street activities, and this is where that information is presented, and following that would be the budget and actual statements for those funds. So with kind of a lay of the land provided, I'm going to walk you through some of the slides and just show some of the financial highlights here. So this is a look at the full accrual business perspective of your governmental activities, and we're simply looking at to what extent are the expenses of each of these functions of your general government operations self-supporting. So we're only looking at the expenditures, or expenses, excuse me, compared to charges for services, operating grants, and capital grants. So you can see there is a differential here, a net expense typically, and that differential is being financed by your unrestricted revenues. That's where the property taxes are going, that's where the state shared revenues are going, to finance that difference. And a very typical picture here is the public safety operation, where that's the largest utilization, largest expense category, as well as largest user of unrestricted resources to finance the operation. And then when we take a look at your public works, that would be streets, street operations, things of that nature. The financing there primarily would be Act 51 funding, fuel tax, would be that differential. Now we're looking at your governmental activities, and so that full accrual basis of accounting again, but where did the dollars come from? So you can see, a nice picture, which is over 50% of the funding is from property taxes, so you have a larger ability to drive your own destiny, where when you're financed primarily by grants, that's great, but those have caveats that you have to follow. So nice picture here, and you can see charges for services, 23%, state shared revenue, relative small percent, approximately 5% of your operations. And this is looking at all the governmental funds. Now we're looking at the modified accrual. Yes, sir?
Can you go back a slide? Quick question. How would that compare to other cities? Are others, are we better off? It sounded like you said we're better off with property taxes because we can control our destiny.
Yes, yes.
Is that better or about average for most cities?
I would say you have a higher percentage of property taxes than average, and to some extent, many communities are relying more heavily also on the state shared revenues. And it's, the state shared revenues are based on populations and things of that nature, and your population's a little different here with having more of a recreational community. You have people that have property here paying property taxes, but maybe the service level isn't there, and they're not included in the state shared revenue from a population perspective, so you're not getting as much of that. I'd like to see personally, and I work with many governmental entities, many cities, I like to see a higher property tax component, just because then you have the flexibility of using it as needed, or you see fit versus being on the hook for grants and things of that nature, where you might get the project done, but you still need to operate, you know? You might build the park, but you still got to mow it and take care of it and things of that nature. So some flexibility in this picture. Yes?
So, make sure I got this right. It's good to have a lot of tax revenue, but the state sharing would be higher if we had more year-round residents.
More people, I believe, is the driver on this.
Relative to the total population.
Yes, yeah, yeah. So some of the driver on the state shared revenue is people. How many do you have in your community is based on how many dollars you're going to receive?
So let me jump ahead one.
Okay.
This is kind of a loaded statement.
Okay.
But if we had more affordable housing, more people, more teachers didn't have to go out of town and could live here, this is a little bit of question to you, a little bit of a general question, but would we, from a financial standpoint, be better off if we had more housing, more people living here? So then the number would go up for the state sharing.
Sure.
It's property taxes.
Sure.
But it wouldn't have to be so reliant on that. I mean, kind of the good and the bad, but wouldn't it be better to have more people?
I couldn't really tell you if you would have more dollars, because if you had property that was worth less, you'd obviously have less property taxes, right? I'm not sure if the offset would be as large from the state shared revenue perspective, but it's definitely something that could be calculated. At what level would that break even, or what have you?
Okay. Yeah, just as a follow-up to that, without a doubt, the more people you bring to town, the easier it is to spread costs over just a larger user base. The more people you bring to town, the more people you have sharing in utility costs. Fundamentally, trying to grow your population has a lot of merit. Growing your population through affordable or even market rates typically comes with the cost of using some type of abatement tool. So as you look at long-term plans to try and incentivize new housing options, just understand that in using those tools, you won't see an immediate return in the form of tax base. You will see likely an immediate return in the number of heads that are part of the community. So yeah, you're likely to see some increase in state shared revenue, but.
You have to give some back then.
Right. Yep. So a typical tool would be like, oh, we've got a couple of housing developments. Briar Hills is a good example. Briar Hills was built roughly 25 years ago. It was done with a 425 transfer in of township property into the city. That 425 agreement is set to expire this next year, so that will officially become city property. That deal was done with a payment in lieu of tax. It's a pilot job, so that's a very large apartment development that is paying a fraction of what would be the typical property taxes. In exchange for doing that, they then serve a population that otherwise wouldn't be able to, wouldn't necessarily be able to afford the apartments. Does that answer your question, sir?
Now we are looking modified accrual. We're looking at the larger funds that you have, and that's the picture of your general fund revenues. You can see that you've had consistent growth in property taxes, which is great, and you can see the other revenues are really dwarfed by that property tax revenue, and they haven't changed substantially from year to year. A picture of your general fund property tax revenue, when we take a look here, you can see how that has increased over time related to property values. And when we take a look at your expenditures for your general fund, we can see things are fairly straight across from year to year, with the exception of public safety. And that's pretty typical of the cities that we work with. Some of that is benefit costs are increasing, and the cost of labor, obviously, generally, every time that you have a contract, if you have a bargaining unit or just general staff, you have incremental inflationary increase over time. Some of these other costs perhaps are more based on when are we going to redo an office or buy some equipment? That'll, each one of these numbers will fluctuate. So those capital items in this modified accrual basis of accounting are showing up as an expenditure. Buy some police cars, that will spike that number. Here is a picture of your general fund, fund balance, as a percentage of expenditures and transfers, and you can see really very consistently approximately 30%. So your bottom line in the general fund, fund balance, represents approximately 30% of a year's expenditures and transfers. And I would say the larger the city typically, the lower the percentage typically. It generally doesn't go below 20%, or there's some issues where they did a giant project and were expecting it, or they're in trouble perhaps. So strong, consistent performance. Here's a look at your electric utility, and you can see for the last three years, you had a positive change in that position. This is looking at it from a business perspective, that full accrual basis of accounting. So the business operations that are being financed by user charges are being presented similar to a business, where we would show your capital assets as an asset being depreciated over time, and your liabilities, those long-term liabilities, being serviced and not shown as an expenditure for the principal component. A picture of your sewer fund operations, you can see 2019 showed a positive change in the bottom line. That can be driven to some extent when you have connection fees and you have growth, and that ends up in the bottom line as well. So keep that in mind. And here is.
And I think it's important, you've said a couple of times, to think of it like a business, and I think it's important for everyone that's listening and watching, is these are our utilities, these are public utilities, we are your shareholders in this business.
Yes.
And we've been very clear, we want to make sure these things are not running in as a deficit, so we, you know, like any typical business, so that happens through, you know, fees and adjusting, always to make sure that we're cognizant of, you know, treating it like a business as you would want it to be.
And recovering your costs, but also, I'm going to go back one side, more importantly, you need to consistently add to that bottom line to be able to invest in the system, new pipes in the ground, equipment to pump the water, or what have you. Each year, those become more expensive, and so theoretically, you should always have a positive bottom line, helping to add to the cash balance, so you don't have to go to the debt market to finance every repair or things of that nature. Picture your water fund, consistency over time, and when we take a look here, here are some of those governmental funds that are non-major, presented in the back of the report, back to that modified accrual basis of accounting. So when we build a road, we show an expenditure, and so we can just see the general fund over time, major streets, local streets, and your street improvement fund. And you can see consistency over time, you've added to the bottom line, but there's not a huge balance in any one of those three funds. When you do a mile of road or a block of road, I'm sure you're very aware of how costly that can be. But the nature of those funds are, you bring in the Act 51 funding or the fuel tax, and then you do the projects, you do the plowing, you do the maintenance, and if you could do that within your Act 51 funding, you're unique. It's difficult to do. Are there any questions I can answer regarding the financial statements, or are opinions that have been issued? Or the additional information provided in here? There's information about your pension, your post-retirement healthcare plan, tenure statistical information in the back. This is actually what I would refer to as a comprehensive annual financial report. It's above and beyond the minimum requirements, but when you are working with bond issues or things of that nature, the bond market is looking for more information on your operations, who's going above and beyond, and you are. So that's positive.
Very good. Any questions of this group, or public questions? Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, just a couple of notes, just for the audience and then anyone watching at home. The information that was presented as part of tonight's meeting is readily available to the public. If you click on tonight's meeting packet, there are links to Peter's presentation, as well as the full CAF or the comprehensive annual financial report. So anyone and everyone can easily find these files. We also have them posted on the city's website. If any member of the public is looking for it and just is struggling to find the information, if they just give me a call, I'll happily get them a copy. And then just a quick shout-out to two ladies that are sitting in the front row. So Michelle Argue and Rosemary's Inc. These two ladies have worked harder than just about anybody I know on the development of the city's finances, on the tracking, the budgeting, and then the actual audit presentation. So these two ladies absolutely kill themselves to make sure that our, as a city, books are clean and in good order, so thank you very much to these two ladies.
Yeah, I'll dit it that and thank you, because oftentimes we've come up with questions and need numbers, and they're spot-on and they're quick, so thank you for everything in getting us to this.
Thank you.
So Peter, thank you for coming and sharing the information. We appreciate it. So right now, we need a motion to accept the 2018-19 audit report as presented and place report on file in the finance department. Just get a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the audit report for fiscal year 2018-19 and place it on file in the finance department.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Again, any public questions before we wrap this up? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It is placed on file. Thank you. Next, city council will be asked to consider approval of Resolution 2020-04, a resolution authorizing the city manager as signatory for a Michigan Coastal Management Program grant agreement in the amount of $35,000 for an ADA-accessible small watercraft dock on the Black River.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-04, resolution authorizing the city manager as signatory for a Michigan Coastal Management Program.
Second. All right, motion and a second. Brian, fill us in.
So members of council, you're looking at the Coastal Zone Management Program, or CZM. CZM is an established program. We've had some good luck with it in the past. At this point, if the council approves a resolution as presented, we can move forward with the grant agreement. The city, if you've ever been down to Black River Park, which I know Mr. Campbell's familiar with, there is currently an ADA-accessible floating pier and kayak launch. This is something that we've had in place for a number of years. It's been very well received. About 10 years ago, we had some local citizens come forward wanting to place a very simple floating pier underneath the Vaskil Bridge on what would be the west side or real close to Captain Lou's. That fell into disrepair a couple of years ago. It was removed just for everyone's safety. We began talks with the Coastal Zone Management, or the CZM folks, about placing We began talks with the Coastal Zone Management or the CZM folks about placing a second ADA accessible launch at that, that bridge location. CZM agreed that it was a worthwhile project. If we move forward, the city would be committing a local management $35,000 towards a $70,000 project. This would be funded through our harbor fund. I will note that with this grant application, we've been working on it for about a year and a half. As you are being asked to approve this, our harbor commission has noted increasing anxiety and concerns about the overall state of boating in our harbor just due to high water. This is likely to be the last capital improvement project that I bring the council for a number of months while we see what we are likely to experience with the Black River and Lake Michigan levels. Now with that said, I, I just wanted to lay the cards on the table and say, just in the last couple of weeks, the harbor commission has expressed growing concerns about any capital outlay tied to marina or harbor expenses. So with that said, if the council wishes to move forward with this project, it is ready in the form of the resolution presented. But I also wanted to make you aware that there is some growing anxiety at the harbor commission level.
Very good. Anybody from the public have any questions before we, on this one? Come on up, just state your name and address and...
David Veenstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. Is this a kind of a one-shot, use it or lose it kind of a thing?
Yeah. Yeah, this is one that my understanding with the CZM is that if, if we don't approve the resolution and move forward with the project, it is unlikely that we will be granted any extensions. Kate's in the room. Kate, is there anything you would add?
The only thing I would add is that this is one more tool that we're going to use to have more mobility in the harbor. Even though we do have the high water concerns, this is something we have been planning for for several years as the, the current dinghy dock just was unusable. And in fact, where it was currently placed, you'd have to almost crawl to get onto it because the water levels had raised so much. That's pretty much what I would say is that we're still trying to move that, get some mobility around the harbor, and this would be one more component of it. It's just the timing is really bad.
Can you describe the use, what kind of boats we're talking?
So stand-up paddleboards, kayaks, small motor, motorboats would be able to tie off. It would be a service that would be no charge. For vendors that are renting out this type of equipment, they could certainly launch from this spot. For people that are visiting one of the restaurants, they could certainly take use or temporarily tie off at the, at the location. Overall, we've received a lot of positive feedback on the ADA style launch at Black River Park. It's been well received. And it's something that's also been noted that it's just part of the city's overall effort to be inclusive. So they are set up so people of all ability levels are able to use, use the, the dock and the launch.
Yeah, they're very handy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will, I will say they are, they're very nice. Now, will we consult with our, I know we're doing some ADA consulting with our consulting firm, Disability Network, just on something like this as it goes in, just ensure we're looking at all the variables?
Yeah, so we have been working with Disability Network for a number of years. As we do park improvements and public space improvements, we do consult with them to do essentially a site plan review. I'm glad you asked that question. It was actually one of my closing comments is this Friday morning, all members of essentially the, the staff management team will be in this room from 8:30 until about 10:00 AM. We'll be doing a follow-up to last year's ADA training from disability networks. The organization is all over Michigan. They do site plan review, they do physical audits where they come out and, and look for ADA concerns. But then they also do consulting with businesses and, and local units of government on understanding what the laws are and then making sure that you're, you're doing your best to be compliant. So that's this Friday morning.
Very good. Thank you. Any other comments on what's before us? All right. Seeing none, we have a motion and a second then to approve Resolution 2020-04 for the Michigan Coastal Management Program Grant for the ADA accessible watercraft dock. All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's approved. Let's go get it. Very good. Next, city council will be asked to consider approval of a proposal from the Curcio Law Firm for services related to a comprehensive audit of the city code of ordinances. So just need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the proposal from Curcio Law Firm for services related to a comprehensive audit of the city code of ordinances.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. This sounds very exciting. Brian, tell us all about it.
So in the spirit of transparency, as I sat and watched the council reading this on and pondering who was going to offer the motion, all I could hear was the Jeopardy music.
There you go.
Okay, so this is one that, I, I brought this to the council's attention really because it's, was going to be a first step in a multi-month process. The, over the last year, the planning commission has been working with Williamson Works doing a similar audit of our zoning ordinance. And they are going through and flagging all of the concerns from just essentially a practical perspective as well as from a state and federal legal perspective. What we would like to do as staff is work with Nick to read every single page of the code of ordinances and put together what would be essentially a roadmap of areas of concern coming from your city's attorney on things that the council should be thinking about. My hope is, using that roadmap during the, the 2020 calendar year, we can really work towards codification, which is essentially a rewrite of all of our codes to try and make them easier for the, the layman to understand, to identify any concerns as it ties back to, to state or federal law. And then to just ask the question of some of the rules that are on the books, should they be on the books still? I had a fairly spirited discussion with, with a couple of council members tied to the pier jumping ordinance. And myself and the police chief just sat in the room and, and we had a good conversation. Essentially, I had a council member asking, why do you have that rule on the book if it can't be enforced? And through having Natalie at the table, she said, well, please understand, it is enforced. It's just enforced at times that you might not be seeing, on days where there's extremely high, high waves. She has instructed her staff, they do not go out onto the pier. They don't risk themselves to try and enforce a municipal ordinance. So it was a good conversation, but as you look through the hundreds of pages that make up our city code, there is going to be numerous examples of that of, does it really make sense to have some of the rules that we have? We saw this to some extent probably 10 years ago as we looked at, the city had what would probably be a questionable ban on firearms in public places. It didn't align with state law or federal law. Ultimately, it was amended and that was struck. I think that this makes sense, but I want to make sure that the council is on board because it's likely going to require some work from the council and it won't necessarily be the most fun topic, but I think it is worthwhile. My hope is that if the council says yes, proceed with this start, that I can then come back and ask the, the council to appoint a committee that could work with the city's attorney, with staff, to try and begin refining recommendations back to the council. This is a process that we've been using at the planning commission and it's worked really well. We don't have all of those details fleshed out at this time, but I just wanted to make sure that the council kind of has a, a shared vision of what would be the next steps and is generally agreeable to those steps. Mr. Mayor, members of council, if you have any questions, feel free.
When was the last time this was performed, this intensive?
I can't find where the, a recent codification has occurred.
Well, personally, I think it's well overdue and, and I think it would be great to review everything and try and simplify things a little bit.
I, I have a lot of confidence in, in our city attorney and I'm just wondering, is he, is he able to take this on and still maintain all the other activities that he's got going for the city right now?
Yeah, Nick and I had a, a real candid conversation and that was my biggest concern was between the workload of his other municipal clients and what will likely be a fairly deep dive into our code, is it something that he felt comfortable with? And I told him that I was perfectly willing to bring in an outside firm, specifically a reference to Dickinson Wright, his former firm, to, to provide assistance. He felt real confident that he could get this done in a, in a timely manner. And then he also capped his fees to ensure that this doesn't turn into one of these ongoing projects that you never see a real end to.
Very good. Yeah, Nick's real sharp and I'm, I'm confident he'll do a nice job for us. And I will echo Mr. Schlock's comment, simplify, less is better. So I would agree. Any other comments from the council or any public questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we have a motion and a second to get going on the review of those ordinances. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is approved. Very good. Next, city council will be asked to receive the 2019 Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Annual Report. Kate, you're here.
Sure. Well, thank you. So this is our end of the year report for 2019. I won't go into too much detail, but just to suffice to say, this is an annual report that's required under the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. And it is to go into the work that had been done by the planning commission. So the planning commission, which had 12 regular meetings and then two special meetings and then two, I'm sorry, three subcommittee work, we, meetings. So they've kind of, they've put some work in this year. They had nine special land use permits. Applications were reviewed and nine were approved. They reviewed nine site plan reviews and, reviews and nine were approved. As for ordinance text amendment proposals, 10 proposals were reviewed, six were approved, one was denied, and three were postponed for further discussion. We had three applications for plan unit development amendments and three were approved. There's quite a bit of work that, that goes into not just preparing this report, but just kind of collating all the work that has been done by the planning commission. So kudos to Brad Cordova, the zoning administrator, for getting this together. And just to remind ourselves, Brad came in, came on board with us in August and he's really been doing a good job for us. Thank you. The, the year-end report also goes into what the zoning board of appeals does. The zoning board of appeals is a quasi-judicial body that does ordinance interpretations as well as considers variances. They met five times over this last year. The other seven months, they didn't have any business. And they had one land use variance application and that was denied. And they had five dimensional variances, three were approved and two were denied. So that was, that's kind of in a nutshell what you've seen. Of course, if you would like, there's in the packet a very nicely color-coded guide and roadmap as to what the planning commission worked on by months. So very well done for Brad. Is there any questions on the year-end report for us?
I will say it was a nice report. It was laid, it was a nice way to see a whole year's work and approved and denied. It was nice all the way through, so well done. If the public wants to see it again, it's in this packet. So it's online if you want to just peek at what happened.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is going to be another one of those offering kudos moments. Kate spends just a huge amount of time working with her planning commission, with her zoning board of appeals. But moreover, the people that sit at that day as representing both the planning commission and zoning board of appeals are doing so at a whopping total cost of $0 to the city. It's all volunteer time and between their committee meetings as well as their, their regular meetings, the city's getting a lot of work at no charge. So thank you to all of them.
Well stated. Thank you. All right, any other questions of Ms. Kate?
Nope, no other questions.
We're good. All right, I guess we're all good up here too. Well, I think you're here for the next one too.
Yes.
We're going to be hearing the 2020 short-term rental snapshot report.
Yes, so we have put together the 2020 snapshot report, which from last year, we're seeing a 19% decrease in the number of business units that, that were applied for at the same period. Last year, I think we had around 421 business permits at that time. We're now down to 389. If we go through the calculations, because this is a four to one ratio cap as stated in ordinance 1045, and of course, that's exempting out certain housing units which are condos and the four planned unit developments, we get 280, 2,827 housing units that we divide by five, which gives us 565 business units. Once we take out 389 permits that are already certified on hold or, or in the process, that leaves us those 176 permits that will be available for the 2020 year. So that's kind of how we got those numbers. We take the raw housing units that are described in the ordinance and do the calculations. All that's been, been very nicely explained out here in this report. Many kudos to Nicholas Page and Ryan Bosher who put that together. And if you keep going into the report, kind of, and that's where we get the 19% decrease from 2019 to 2020, showing that we're, we're seeing more people kind of either decide to combine their housing, their, their rental properties into one. So maybe you had two units and now you went to one unit. Or people are converting over to personal units, or they're just getting out of, of the rental game and they wanted to live there full-time. So we are seeing a decrease in the number of business permits that people are holding on to. We do have a map here that shows the breakdown of the short-term rentals over the city, but no surprise there, they're kind of similar as to what we've seen in 2016 and 2018. You do still see the higher concentration in the area southwest of downtown with 34% rentals, but you're still seeing them spread out amongst the city. And then there was some anecdotal evidence from our short-term rental inspector, Nick Page, as well as some information compiled by Host Compliance, which is the third-party vendor that we use for online monitoring. So just some, some bedroom breakdown, additional statistics and how the inspections came out. We were seeing that while 20, 26% of the 600, over 600 inspections passed on their first try, there were just common things that weren't being addressed. But, but we have a sheet out there explaining what exactly we're going through. The copy of what the inspectors marked down is on, on our website too. And so people are getting more familiar with that. And it seems that we are really using well the, the Host Compliance, that seems to be working out well. I did want to note that only 29 properties were identified as operating without an unregistered STR. Zero, we have, we've not issued civil infractions, but we have contacted each one of them and said, hey, do you want to register? More likely than not, they have turned in their paperwork or took down their advertisement. We have only received eight complaints from the SHPD regarding STRs, noise-related complaints. All of them appear to be separate incidents concerning different people. And then because we did get a request for the revenues and expenditures, we did put in a very high-level breakdown of the revenues and expenditures in the packet. I'm not sure if that's up there, it's the next page over, but right now, it's calculating that we're, we're leaking a loss in this program. When we calculated the fees for the short-term rental program, we did anticipate that we would probably see a loss, but we wanted to see within two years how closely we're, we were at with that. The majority of the expenses are going to be for payroll. We did create a new department, new ordinance to be enforced, so we have hired folks on to do the lion's share of that work. And I, we did, I believe, over 600, I think the correct number is 621 maybe, inspections this year. So we did quite a bit of work in the, in the department.
Do you mind, like in 60 seconds or less, just to explain what Host Compliance? I mean, I know what it is, but just to, just people might not be familiar with it.
Sure. Host Compliance is a software company that goes in, it monitors online presence of many different lending platforms like Airbnb, HomeAway and VRBO. It basically does a meta-crawling of the web and sees certain, certain addresses or, or advertisements and then links them back to properties here in, in South Haven. And they kind of do a measuring to make sure that they are, are they registered? Are they advertising for a correct amount? Or, you know, that kind of thing. And if they're renting in the, in the allotted time. So if it's less than two days, that would give us a flag, you know? There's a, it's, it's a fine line because some of those renting platforms will list on there that you can rent up to a day or a day or less, but when you actually try to go in and rent the day, it doesn't work. You have to get the minimums, but every one of those have to be checked.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Members of council, if you could just key on this slide that's up on the overhead. In 2018, staff presented a report that was issued by Baird. They're a financial advising firm. At that time, we brought forward a fee structure that noted at $500 per ins, or I'm sorry, At that time, we brought forward a fee structure that noted at $500 per ins, or I'm sorry, $500 for a business-type short-term rental permit, that it would generate program revenue, but it would still be, it would be insufficient to cover the anticipated costs. This is just evidence of what we were trying to say in 2018. But we also noted in 2018 that to get the department created, to begin the hundreds of inspections, we were hoping to give it one to two years to really get off the ground. I don't, I'm not asking for any type of action. I just want you all to be aware that what we're trying to do with these fees is really what I would describe as essentially just control the bleeding. So we're getting closer. The fee structure is working. We've seen fewer and fewer challenges from property owners, so we anticipate the legal expenses will go down. We anticipate the efficiency of the inspections will go up, but in the next year, we may be asking the council to reconsider that fee structure.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions before we move on? All right, I guess not.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So in 2019, it cost the city money to have short-term rentals in terms of ministering it. So it sounds like you're saying we don't want to bump up the fees to cover it, we want to give it another year to see how it works out?
At this time, I'd like to spend a bit more time working with our finance department to truly understand exactly every dollar that went through the program. And then we'll come back as we work through the 2020 budget process. We may be asking for the council to reconsider the fees. We're not at a point tonight to offer any formal recommendation.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions? All right. Let's roll on. City council will be asked to consider approval of Resolution 2020-05, a resolution setting the planning and zoning application and review fee schedule. Just need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-05, a resolution setting the planning and zoning application and review fee schedule.
I'll second.
All right, motion and a second. Is it Brian or Katie?
Mr. Mayor, the Kate show will continue.
Continue, I thought so. Very good. Go, Kate.
Sure. Councilmembers, before you is a resolution updating mostly the planning and zoning fees here. We have not updated the planning and zoning fees since 2009. I did attach the existing fee schedule into the packet, kind of showing the prices and the fee schedule on that. What else is on here that I really also wanted to show is that it's very disjointed. It's very hard to kind of find what you're looking for. So we, the building department put together these fees, and we ran these by finance as well as some of the other departments that are affected, as well as doing an analysis of local communities and what they're also charging. And what we found is that we are, we were undercharging quite a bit for our services. And when I say undercharging, we weren't even meeting the cost that we had to put out. So for a typical zoning board, zoning board of appeals, your publishing cost could be up to $285, whereas the application fee could be as low as $150. So the city was picking up the cost of a lot of those issue, a lot of those costs. So what we've done is we've matched these up to kind of be in par with local communities as well as where we felt like we were falling short. Not everything went up, like signs and awnings are the same price. Temporary signs actually dropped. It was $35 for temporary signs. Now they're $20. But many of them have been priced up because we're seeing that we're not, we're not meeting our costs on those fees. So I don't have a percentage that they were increased because they were taken on an ad hoc and individual basis, but they've all been fine-tuned based on what we did in our research in the building department.
Just to follow up on Kate's summary, the thing I just want to stress is we really have not done a major rerun of the fee structure in many years. And since 2013, putting out these fees, which are intended to pay for themselves, has actually cost us to do about $130,000. So this is one where we want to encourage developments, and this is a bit of a double-edged sword. As you raise your fees to truly cover the costs, you may hear some complaining from developers that it's just one more thing that they're having to have the outlay of cash before actually starting construction. The flip side is, that's $132,000 that could have gone into paving sidewalks or public safety, you name it.
Very good. And the goal is to cover costs, is that right?
That's correct.
Cover costs. All right. We've got a motion and a second. Are any public questions on this one? Council questions on this one? It was pretty clear, so it was laid out, it was very clear, by the way. I was reading through, pretending I was building my house again, and was kind of glad I'm already done. So, all right. We have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2020-05. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It is approved. City council will be asked to consider adoption of the 2020 Economic Development Strategic Plan.
I would like to make a motion that the city council be asked to consider adoption of the 2020 Economic Development Strategic Plan.
Second.
Motion and a second. All right. So Brian, fill us in. And Jim's here, too, but let me know.
I'll take this one, too.
Okay, still.
I'm just going to ask Jim to come on up front.
Come on up, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, I'll defer to Kate and Jim. They've done all of the heavy lifting on this project.
Very good.
Well, we have before you the 2020 Economic Development Strategic Plan that Jim and his associate Patricia Mellon so eloquently put together through all their meetings with stakeholders and outreach. It turned out to be a very fantastic plan. The LDFA has considered this at their meeting, their regular meeting last Monday, and have formally adopted the plan. And the LDFA has also undertaken to follow the priorities as established in the plan. And the first thing that they'll be doing at their next meeting in February is considering an RFP, or Request for Proposal, to send out to local economic development organizations. So this plan has been adopted. It was, the LDFA commissioned its drafting, and they've adopted it. So I guess just to align this board with the LDFA, we're asking for a motion to approve the plan. And I can't thank Jim enough for his stellar work on this project. He's been wonderful to work with, and I think the plan speaks for itself in that we really have a plan and a direction and where to go now. So thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
I'll echo that. All right, we, let's just, before this, before the council's question, any public questions before the council jumps in? Seeing none, all right, council, comments, questions? It's a great piece of work. It's a fantastic start. And I say it's a start because there's a lot of steps to get this going. The goal is this is the start of a, this is a working document. It's not, it's not a folder to go on a shelf.
No.
Economic development is paramount, and we've got to keep it first and foremost on our minds. So Brian, you want to?
Just, one of the things that Jim actively pushes in this plan is just the expansion of broadband, that the easier it is for people to be connected, to be able to work remotely, the more people will consider living here. And something that just in the last couple of weeks, staff has been doing, is trying to figure out what we can be doing to encourage the expansion of broadband. So two weeks ago, Bill Hunter was working through an initial application for grant funds to be made available for the rollout of 5G to try to go and get us some extra cash for that project. Last week, Jim, Kate, and Bill were sitting in a meeting with Bloomingdale Telephone, trying to figure out how to essentially get fiber to the home. And that's something that we're going to continue actively working, and we believe that major improvements could be coming.
Very good. Yeah, it's, it's a very well-written document. I appreciate it, because it talks about a lot of the stuff we've been talking about here, everything from housing to training to Uron Economy. It's, it all sits in that document. So thank you for that work. So if we have no other questions, we have a motion and a second to adopt the 2020 Economic Development Strategic Plan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Again, thank you, Jim, Kate, for all that work. It's a great document. Next, city council will be asked to consider approval of the following council appointments to boards and commissions. We'll do, I'll just do this as one. We have George Sleeper to the Planning Commission, and then Jeff Arnold to the Liberty Hyde Bailey Museum Board.
I'll make a motion for the approval of George Sleeper to Planning Commission and Jeff Arnold to Liberty Hyde Bailey Museum Board.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Gentlemen, any comments, regrets, concerns? Everyone's good? All right. Council, nobody else has concern? We have a motion and a second to make those appointments. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. You are appointed. Thank you both. That takes us to citizens in the audience who've heard on items not on the agenda. And if you'd like to speak, just come on up, state your name and address, and you'll have up to five minutes to share your thoughts. Come on up. Just wait for that jeopardy.
Now, I think what I'm going to say might not be so well-received. So after hearing about Bill Hunter doing the, going out and getting the grants for the 5G, so this will be kind of an anti-5G. Pardon me.
No problem. Can you state your name and address, sir?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and first, I want to say thanks to everybody who serves, and thank you, Mr. Disat. My name's Adam Miller, 316 Fruit Street, and I've got a bachelor of science in physics and chemistry, and I pose ordinance 1055. Just doing a risk-reward assessment, I just find it to be unfavorable. The wavelength, these wavelengths that they're doing, the high-energy wavelengths, can't pass through objects. So basically, the radiation is, it'll go into your body, basically, and stop. It won't go through like radio waves. It's a really high-energy wave. So it gets absorbed completely in the body. Industry X, it's non-ionizing radiation, so it's no problem, but in fact, it can break weaker bonds in the body, non-ionic bonds, and can harm the cells. According to the Journal of Plasma Science, that this sort of exposure can change cell growth, activity of enzymes. I'll give you guys a copy of my notes if anybody wants them. The health risks won't be seen overnight, but should be looked at more like second-hand smoke. You know, it can cause cancer later in life, potentially. Or it may not. But because of these risks, Brussels and Geneva, you know, stopped doing their 5G upgrades. Then there were beehive die-offs in China, and they had to resort to hand-pollinating their fruit crops, which would obviously be really devastating here because we've got a lot higher labor costs. So if we had to hand-pollinate our fruit crops, that'd be really kind of quite a problem, I'd say. A lot of municipalities have fought against the small cells. I think that's kind of a red flag that it may be a problem. 25 states have not followed the FCC's new rule regarding the deployment of small cell equipment. That's kind of a red flag as well. And then I've got, kind of got some issue with the language of the amendment. It has shall-issue language, like if the, if the stuff is proposed, then the city shall issue it. And so because of that, it's kind of a rubber stamp-type language instead of the may-issue type language. And so I think that maybe, I'd like to see some of that language walked back just a little bit. And I think also, we could repeal the ordinance as sort of a vote against the dangerous technology. This is just my opinion, you know. I think it's based in science. I know that it'll probably come or something like that, you know, inevitably, but just as, like I said, sort of a vote against, against the technology. You know, I wasn't worried about the 4G stuff, but then this stuff, just the more research you do, the more concerned it is. So let's see, I think there should be safety conditions placed on the permitting language also. And then there was another issue that I had about the language. It says that you don't actually need to get a permit if you're just swapping one small cell for another small cell. So some of the 5G small cell units won't even need to get a permit. And then also, because of that exemption to the permitting process, the site location map that shows where the 5G cell towers will be, won't need to include all new small cells, just the ones that fell under the permitting process. So maybe that could be reviewed as well. And I'd personally like a copy of the map, and I would say, you know, I wouldn't want one of these next to my house. Fortunately, like I said, the radiation will be absorbed really rapidly by solid objects, so the house can afford some level of protection from it. I would move my bedroom to the far side of the house if I had one on a certain side of the house. I'd consider moving if it was just right next to my house, frankly. And one of the benefits of this technology, almost done, is crowd control applications. So that's, that's a good one. They've, Raytheon has developed this, 95 gigahertz, a little bit higher than the first-phase 5G stuff, where you can use it for crowd control. So 4th of July, that'll be pretty good. Yeah.
Your time. Thank you. Appreciate it. Get your report to Brian, and he can pass it on to us.
Okay. If anybody would like a copy of my notes?
I'll take them, sir.
Sure.
He can share them.
If you give me your name and email, I'll email you all of the background documents. If you're comfortable with that. Otherwise.
Okay. Yeah. Is this what you want? Yeah, that's, that's, I've got, if, if anybody else would like a copy, I can just...
He can get a copy to us. That's great. Yep, leave him, he can get his copies.
Thanks.
Thank you for your time.
It'll be good on 4th of July if you use it for the crowd control.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Was there anybody else that had any comments tonight? All righty, seeing none, that takes us to city manager comments.
Members of council, over the last weekend, I hope everyone had a very relaxing weekend. I just wanted to say thank you to some of the staff who were kind of scrambling. On Saturday, Van Buren Transit had a bus slide off the road and actually take out a utility pole, which then pulled down the phone service lines for our 637-5151 number. I know council each got an email, just as a heads-up, that the non-emergency phone system was down. Phil Poole had me aware of it almost instantly on Saturday. Police and fire were scrambling to figure out a way to continue receiving phone calls for anyone in need. So we set up a temporary line that has since been corrected. The phone service has been restored. So 5151 is back up and working. But between Phil Poole, Bill Hunter, and Deb Davidson, they were great. They came in on a Saturday to get notice out via Facebook, on the city's website, sent out to all local media, and on and on, and then did it again today to reverse that action. So thank you. And then for anyone who's just been observing the lake levels, who's been observing the, just the damage that's occurring at the South Beach, the Black River, and on, your first meeting in February, I believe it's Monday, February 3rd, staff's intent is to just load the council and the public with more information on what rising lake levels mean to the city of South Haven. So for the meeting on the 3rd, we're going to have some engineering team members here to walk you through the, just the ever-increasing price tag that's associated with lake levels. I'll then have representatives who will be assisting you from our emergency management with Van Buren County Sheriff's Department, walking the council through this labyrinth that is both state and federal aid to possibly see some cost recovery. And then lastly, I'll have members of the current legislature and former legislature members just talking with the council about what to expect in the form of both state and federal aid. This will be likely a fairly lengthy meeting, but it should be really helpful in having the council understand exactly what we're facing, and then give you a real opportunity to ask questions of what's realistic. I can tell you, my team spent Friday afternoon on the phone with Bob Kirk from Van Buren County Emergency Management, and Bob was just pulling no punches, telling us exactly what he thought would get funded and what would not. So it's really going to come down to critical infrastructure. So protecting water filtration plant, ensuring that wastewater treatment plant can continue to flow, those are going to be the two highest priorities. As you go down the list, keeping Dunkley dry, keeping North Shore dry, dry and open, keeping the beaches open and accessible, those are something that we will actively pursue, but that's unlikely to have immediate cost recovery. So some tough discussions are coming. I've sent each and every one of you a copy of our initial report...
I've sent each and every one of you a copy of our initial report. That number is going to grow. So a lot to consider. February 3rd, we'll have an interesting discussion. Those are my comments, sir.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Brian before we go on to us? See none. I'll start with Joe.
No comments.
I just want to thank everyone that came tonight. Adam, thank you for your comments and concerns. Appreciate you sharing that with us. I wanted to say that the report on the short-term rentals was very informative. I feel that that data is very helpful and provides useful information, useful objective information that we can use in the future. That's my comments. Thank you.
No comment tonight.
Coming down.
Today being Dr. King's, the observation of the holiday for Dr. King, I'm reminded of my favorite quote from him, and being that we just heard the report about the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals, to all our people that serve for free on those councils, this is kind of apropos. Dr. King said, "Not everyone can be famous, but everyone can be great, because greatness is determined by the service that you give to society." So thank you, Dr. King.
No comment.
First, I would like to thank Rosa Lee and her committee, and I see she's not here, for the beautiful MLK program that she did on this morning. I was so proud of the South Haven students for their leadership skills that they exemplified on today, especially when one of the students spoke up and she testified of something that she had seen while going to college. And what I enjoyed so much about her is that she was willing to speak up for what she saw that was wrong. And it really touched me as an adult, and I think that we all can learn something from our students or from the students of South Haven Public Schools, and that is to speak up for things that are not right. And we have to learn how to speak up, even when it's sometimes our relatives or our friends or our associations. We have to learn how to speak up. So I think we, as a council, we, as a community, can learn how to speak up. We wouldn't have never known that Dr. Martin Luther King had a dream if he wasn't willing to speak up for what was right. And so I just think that we, as a community in 2020, that we need to purposely learn how to speak up. And in my closing, I heard Mrs. Sharad read this on today, and it just really touched me. And she read, "Blessed are the peacemakers, for they are... They will be called the children of God," Matthews 5 and 9. "Lord, make me an instrument of thy peace where there is hatred; let me sow charity where there is injury and pardon, where there is error and truth, where there is doubt and faith, where there is despair and hope, where there is darkness and light, and where there is sadness and joy. O divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled or asked to console, to be understood as to be understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive; it is in parting that we are parting; and it is in dying to ourselves that we are born to eternal life." And I just thought that was a nice closing. Amen.
Well done. I also would just like to say thank you to Rosa Lee, the Diversity Coalition, South Haven Public Schools. And I, too, I was very impressed. The students did a wonderful job today. I was that... And I know the young lady, yes, said the same thing. I said, good for her for saying it, and it was well-stated. Snowmobiles. I couldn't help but notice some snowmobiles running around. Now, were we able to get some signs made to get the... I know there was a little discussion, but I still haven't...
I believe that we placed signs up last year on the approved route, and I will have to check. What's that?
They placed them again.
Okay. Because I was looking at a couple spots I didn't may ought to check, because I was trying to get down to City Hall when I was driving around, so it's all right. I was just trying to make sure it was clear, so...
And I think we put out the annual news release on snowmobile allowance sometime in November, and we went a couple of months without really thinking about it. So I will check with staff to make sure that...
I'm just glad to see them, that's all. We drove north this weekend, and they were out by the hundreds in Cadillac, so I'm happy to see them come to town, and we welcome them to come and enjoy our downtown. And on that note, I'll just say thanks again to our staff for keeping the roads clear. I do enjoy driving down the road and not slipping off it, so thanks for being out at all hours to keep us safe. We're actually going to be going into closed session. So this will... Just for those that are watching, we will end the live stream. We'll be going into closed session, and after that, we will adjourn out after that. So at this time, I'll be looking for a motion to go into closed session pursuant to the Michigan Open Meetings Act, Public Act Number 267 of 1978, 15.268, Section 8A, for the annual personnel evaluation for the city manager.
I make a motion that we go into closed session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and this will be a roll call vote.
Campbell?
Yes.
Reeser?
Yes.
Schlock?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Why don't we take five minutes, and we'll meet back in this room?
A plus. I give them an A plus.
A plus. There you go. I like it.